All right, good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting. We are re-entering open session at, sorry, can we have it quiet so to make sure that everybody can hear? Thank you. All right, we are re-entering open session at 7:40 PM. May I have a roll call?
Member Dr. Lopez, member Dr. Coe?
Here.
Member Noah? Member Dr. Varzene?
Here.
Member Flink?
Here.
Member Jacobs?
Here.
Member Abraham?
Here. All right, are there any changes to the agenda? None, okay. Next, we will recognize the Niles North DECA State Champions. All right, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, hello? In what seemingly is an annual event, we're here again this year to celebrate and honor our DECA State Champions. For those of you that go into Niles North, not only is DECA responsible for the award-winning Decadent Delights, but they are really instrumental in helping students develop a sense of ownership and entrepreneurship, teamwork, collaboration. If you come in through door 16, you will see probably 50 to 75 DECA students showcasing their particular projects. So, we're very proud of Coach Addig, Coach Paul, Coach Torres, and Coach Milky for all their work, and especially proud of our students, our state champions, tonight. So, without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to teacher, coach, Jean Addig.
I'm not gonna speak very long because I'm here for my students and they're gonna do all the talking. We had three state champions this year. We brought 59 students to state 24 qualified for Nationals, and we'll be leaving on Friday for Orlando, Florida, where hopefully we'll have some national winners like we did last year, so fingers crossed on that. Of our three state champions, two of our students are here. One of, a couple of our students were not able to make it with breaking their fast with Ramadan and such, so it was not very convenient for them. But, we did have a senior, Salman Mehdi, who took first place in the professional selling event. And, I'm going to introduce, I'm gonna start with Hafsa Faroz, who is a multi-year state champion.
Hi, I'm Hafsa Faroz. I'm a senior at Niles North High School, and I've been doing DECA for four years, and I can proudly say that it has turned me into the person I am today. I wouldn't be speaking in front of all of you this confidently today if I hadn't done DECA for these four years. So, the project that I was on this year with Asal Ahmadineh and Ishikameta, who weren't able to come today, they are also senior girls, and we were running Decadent Delights together this year. So, I was the finance manager, and with my accounting background, I've taken that class with Ms. Addig for the past two years now, and it had made this position a perfect opportunity for me to showcase those skills. So, we did a 20-page paper about Decadent Delights, how we transformed it into the business it is this year. So, what we did this year was, we tried to hold, from 50 to 100 members this year, it was just a really big, difficult jump to employee management, so that's what we worked on this year. We used Omela, the third-party online payment platform for mobile payments, and we marketed with, through our school, with the North Straw Broadcast and the Viking Voice to increase customer retention and kind of get more students involved in DECA, whether it's through the business or through DECA in classrooms. So, this year, we rang first place as state champions, and I'm just really proud of everything that my team has been able to accomplish. Thank you.
Now, I want to introduce sophomore, Jack Jaminsky, and he is gonna tell you about his project where he is the state champion.
So, I'm Jack Jaminsky. I'm a sophomore at Niles North. That's my first year doing a DECA competition. I chose the financial consulting event, which was a 15-minute speech about a predetermined topic, which this year was online banking. So, I got tasked with the scenario of being a financial consultant, consulting president of a bank, to move services to an online platform to retain customer service and improve customer satisfaction while reducing costs. I spent a lot of time researching that topic before this. I didn't really know too terribly much about online banking. I was more focused on the stock market, that was my niche. But, I have expanded my knowledge and maybe even have found a new career opportunity, being a financial consultant. It's a very interesting topic to learn about and helped me greatly with my presentational skills in order to go in front of a judge, talk for 15 minutes straight without my script, just meeting my board, talking, trying to be in a persuasive manner to learn and to help others prescribe solutions to their problems. Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to have my students come and talk to you about their projects. I'm very proud of them, and I'm very proud of all of our students. DECA is a great opportunity, and I thank the board and the administration for all of its support, and it gives students a place in the school to follow their passions, so thank you.
Do we, oh, for the presentation? I think it's afterwards, right? After the presentations? Pardon?
We have one more to present.
Yeah, one more to present, and then we're gonna do it after the second presentation.
All right, so Hafsa has to go.
Oh, no, so maybe we could...
Let's just do it now, then.
Yeah, can we just do it now? Yeah.
Right up there.
Right here.
Up there.
Everyone?
Yeah.
It's almost like if you're a guy with all his people like that.
Oh, okay, let's do that.
All right, so for our next presenter, Niles West, we will recognize Johanna Endashaw, who placed first place for Poetry Out Loud. Are you gonna read poetry for us, I hope?
Thank you very much. I would like to welcome to the April Board Meeting 10th grader, Ms. Johanna Endashaw, and Poetry Out Loud sponsor, Ms. Sally Graham, and Director of English, Dr. Michael Cussera, who's trying to hide back there. Johanna won first place at the state championship in March and will advance to the national championship in May for Poetry Out Loud. Poetry Out Loud encourages students to learn about great poetry through memorization and recitation. This program helps students master public speaking skills, build self-confidence, and learn about literary history and contemporary life. Johanna came out as number one, representing Niles West High School from a group of 16 students representing eight regions in the state of Illinois in Springfield, and she recited three poems. Johanna, yes, good job. Poetry is not something that many students are comfortable with, so thank you for your passion for poetry and for representing Niles West in such a beautiful way. We are so proud of you. Now, I would like to invite Ms. Graham and Dr. Cussera to come say a few words about Johanna.
Or, or just Ms. Graham.
Johanna is not only a poet, but she is in orchestra, basketball, debate, she's involved in UNICEF, she is a homeroom mentor and a Lit Center tutor. But, in January through March, her focus was poetry. In Springfield, when Johanna went to the state championship, she mesmerized the crowd with her first poem. It was entitled, "My Therapist Wants to Know About My Relationship to Work." They had an audible wow in the audience when she finished. Then, she went on to recite "Siren Song" by Margaret Atwood. Finally, she recited the poem on the Statue of Liberty entitled "The New Colossus" by Emma Lazarus. We were so thrilled and excited when she was chosen as the winner for the state of Illinois, which is a first for District 219. Now, she will go on to represent the state of Illinois in Washington DC, where they'll have one person from every state and territory. It's such an honor. We're so proud of her. So, tonight, Johanna's always up for an adventure, so we asked her to see if she could prepare something for you. So, Johanna.
Hi, as she introduced me, I'm Johanna Endashaw. I'll be reciting for you the poem that is mounted under the Statue of Liberty. "The New Colossus" by Emma Lazarus. Not like the brazen giant of Greek fame, with conquering limbs astride from land to land. Here, at our sea-washed sunset gates, shall stand a mighty woman with a torch whose flame is the imprisoned lightning, and her name, Mother of Exiles. From her beacon hand glows worldwide welcome. Her mild eyes command the air-bridged harbor that twin cities frame. Keep ancient lands your storied pomp, cries she with silent lips. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shores. Send these, the homeless tempest tossed, to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door.
I don't know if anyone else got the chills, but I did.
Yes, thank you. That was beautiful. All right, now we're gonna move on to something not, probably is beautiful, but I'm sure we'll have some wonderful comments today. So, public comments. Public comment is intended to provide an opportunity to address the Board of Education on matters of concern or interest relative to the business of the district. The Board has the obligation to provide for public comment within the context of an orderly public meeting. We ask that our audience allow those speaking during public comment an opportunity to communicate to the Board without disruption. We further ask that those addressing the Board observe appropriate decorum and refrain from the use of disruptive conduct or words. As the Board is obligated to at all times protect student confidentiality rights, we ask that you not use public comment to discuss specific students or discuss issues that identify specific students. The Board is also obligated to protect the confidentiality rights of employees. I'm almost done, I know it's a long one. As such, we ask that you not use public comment to address issues with specific employees. The district provides the public with multiple means to effectively communicate student and employee concerns to the district. If you have an issue to raise with the Board concerning a student or an employee, please communicate with the superintendent to facilitate a response. We will now proceed to public comment. We will hear in-person comment in the order that they were received. Each individual will have up to three minutes for their comment. The Board Secretary, Dr. Lopez, who is not here, so Ilana will be timing the comments, will let you know when your time has expired. Public comments will proceed for one hour. Electronically submitted comments will be read to the Board if time allows. All electronically submitted comments have been provided to the Board and posted on the website. So, I'm gonna go ahead, the in-person ones first, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the first person's name, and you can come up to the podium and speak. You'll have three minutes. So, Mustafa El-Daraji, I think? Sorry, I said that wrong.
Good evening, members of the Board of Directors, Superintendent Moore, and members of the District 219 Cabinet. My name is Mustafa El-Daraji, and I am a senior at Niles West High School, where I'm proud to serve as the Middle Eastern North African Club President, also known as MENA Club. As you know, this year, Niles West hosted District 219's first ever MENA Student Summit. On behalf of the 300-plus students from across our district who attended, I'm here to say thank you. The summit was an incredible and meaningful event for many of us, bringing together students of different MENA backgrounds for a day of solidarity, community building, and celebration. Superintendent Moore, the event could not have happened without your support. Thank you for supporting and uplifting the voices of MENA students in our district. Your leadership and this event marked significant change for our community. Before this year, most MENA students felt invisible. This is the first time that we collectively feel seen and heard. I would also like to thank Dr. Wells, Ms. Stallworth, Principal Edwards, and our very own Principal Dr. Ritter for their support of this event, as well as Ms. Trubin and Ms. Benjamin for their leadership. We would also like to thank Board Member Dr. Varzene for attending the summit. Round of applause, please. Now, lastly, I would also like to offer special thanks to our Assistant Principal, Mr. Parther, who is truly the first administrator who made MENA students feel supported at Niles West. Mr. Parther attended a MENA Club meeting earlier this year and then consistently supported us. He sat down and listened, but instead of just listening to us, he acted on his actions. He took meaningful action to support us. Now, his support and solidarity has truly meant a lot to us. Special thanks to our friends at Black Student Union for inspiring us with the Black Team Summit and standing in solidarity with us. From my personal experience, I'd like to say, throughout elementary, middle, and high school, I could never confidently... school, I could never confidently say I was well-represented. This did not bother me, as of course, I wasn't expecting my culture to be plastered on every corner I turn in the school. But I can only dream, because of course, who doesn't enjoy the attention? Following the summit, this became a reality. Now, MENA music played in the halls for the Assyrian New Year and MENA Heritage Month. The beautiful cultural decorations brightened the halls, and for some reason, everyone had an obsession from our merchandise from the summit. New fashion statement, question mark? Now, I am filled with a sense of pride for my identity that I wish everyone could experience, and I truly do believe this will happen in the near future with the path that the district is heading towards. And so I say, from the bottom of my heart, shukran, and thank you.
Our next commenter is Dania Khan.
My name is Dania Khan. I am a senior at Niles West and co-president of MENA Club. It was important for me to attend tonight's meeting to say thank you for supporting the first-ever Middle Eastern North African Student Summit at District 219. Though often referred to as the Arab or the Muslim world, the MENA region is incredibly diverse in terms of its people, history, languages, religions, and local customs. While there are many shared elements of culture and values, there is no one version of Middle Eastern or North African heritage. At the MENA Student Summit, we had the opportunity to honor and celebrate the complexities and unique beauty of our identities. But we also talked about the challenges that come with being a part of the MENA community. It's not easy to be who we are, and many of us often find ourselves minimizing our identities even at Niles West. The truth is, our community and our needs are often ignored or disregarded. Our identities are erased, especially when the district looks at the MENA students in this room and still officially categorizes us as white, even though our experiences are far from that. Anytime we enter a room, there are misconceptions and stereotypes that follow us. Our suffering and trauma is normalized. News of the tragedy in the Middle East isn't even considered news anymore. Many of our teachers don't really understand who we are or where our families come from. Worst of all, we usually have to go through tough times on our own over and over again. We are tired of fighting to be seen and to be heard. However, the most beautiful and unifying thing about being a part of the MENA community is our collective resilience. Our people are survivors of conflict, devastation, displacement, oppression, and hardship, and yet still, we maintain ties to our cultures and each other, even in places like this, far away from our homelands. The MENA Student Summit was the first time we had been given a space to come together and share our stories at District 219, and we are grateful for the opportunity to celebrate the rich history and diverse cultures of the vast regions that we all call home. I hope the Board and our district leaders understand how much this has meant to us and how impactful this experience has been. I speak for many graduating seniors when I say that we hope to see this event organized annually to celebrate and uplift the MENA community. Thank you for giving us the unique opportunity to connect with one another and our heritage. It is truly one of the most memorable days of my high school experience and a day that I will never forget. I would also like to mention that MENA Club honored six staff members at the summit, and I would like to highlight them here as well. They have all gone above and beyond to support our needs. From Niles North, we honored Ms. Benjamin and Ms. Samuel for their tireless efforts in advocating for the adoption of an Assyrian language program. Ms. Benjamin's efforts in particular goes beyond the Assyrian language. She is an advocate for all students, has been and has been working to uplift our voices. We are so grateful for her leadership. At Niles West, we honored our Assistant Principal, Mr. Parther. We honored our Assistant Principal, Mr. Parther, and History Teacher, Mr. Koseba. They have really made the MENA community feel heard and seen, and sometimes it felt like they were the only ones who were really listening. The MENA Summit wouldn't have gone without Mr. Parther, who encouraged us to advocate for ourselves and supported us along the way. Mr. Koseba is the kind of teacher every student deserves. He is not only an educator, but an advocate and ally. He is someone who has always stood up for us and our right to be heard and to be seen, and we are incredibly grateful for him. Thank you again to all who supported this event for seeing the value in this space and making it possible. We hope that the MENA Student Summit becomes a new tradition at District 219. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Jasme Matthew.
My name is Jasme Matthew, and I'm a senior at Niles West High School, and I'm a member of the MENA Club. One aspect of the school that I've loved over my years at West is how diverse the student population is, and I'm sure that many community members are proud of the diversity that our district has. However, diversity is more than just different cultures or races. It's also a concept that revolves around understanding and respecting an individual, their traditions, beliefs, and their importance within the community. And this is exactly what the MENA Student Summit provided for our district. It provided various opportunities for students like me to learn more about MENA culture through dancing, singing, student stories, and food. It was truly one of the best experiences that I've had here at Niles West. It was beautiful to see many people of different backgrounds come together to share their stories, support one another, celebrate each other's cultures, and dance together. Our district talks a lot about inclusivity and uplifting cultures, and this was one of the first times that I've seen it happen in person. I hope to see our district continue to support the creation of spaces such as these, not just for the MENA students or the Black Teen Summits, but hopefully for spaces for Asian and Latinx students. I hope the Board recognizes the importance of offering these spaces as a means towards building a community, solidarity, and a sense of belonging among students. I would like to say thank you to the Board, to Superintendent Moore, to Dr. Wells, Ms. Stallworth, Dr. Ritter, Dr. Edwards, Ms. Benjamin, Ms. Strubing, Mr. Parther, and also our club sponsors, Ms. Hannah and Ms. Madi, for working so hard to make this day possible for us. I'm so proud to be part of the first-ever MENA Student Summit, and I know this is a memory that I will cherish for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Kimia Nafisi.
My name is Kimia Nafisi, and I'm a senior at Niles West High School. I'm an Iranian or Persian student here at D-219. Because of my Iranian identity, I've always felt very isolated and alone within the walls of Niles West. But I've felt this isolation since childhood. To put it simply, there were never any kids around me who looked like me. Although we have a large population of MENA students at Niles West, very few are of Iranian heritage. I've felt immense cultural disconnect within many facets of my identity. Am I American enough to fit in? Can I still connect to the other MENA students when I feel like I'm an outsider? Can I share my story in hopes of making progress? This internal dialogue would play in my head year after year, and as time went on, I began to lose hope. Finally, after years of feeling like my community was invisible, we were presented with the MENA Truth Space hosted by Calvin Terrell. Being in that room and hearing so many stories that I could relate to was nothing short of empowering. When we were given the opportunity to continue our progress with the MENA Summit, you could see an immediate shift within our community at Niles West. Our MENA students felt a sense of hope, excitement, and pride. We all saw this as a chance to finally have a voice and let our existence be known because for so long, we had felt overlooked and forgotten. Being on the MENA Student Panel was an absolute honor, because for the first time, I was able to tell my story without fear of being silenced or ignored. We used that panel as a moment to help heal our generational trauma and come together through our shared hardships. We started the summit by discussing the pain and injustice within our community, but we ended the summit with joy. We sang, we danced, we ate, and we represented the strength of our people. After the summit, the MENA community at Niles West seems to have a stronger sense of camaraderie. Traditionally, the MENA community is known to have a sense of tension amongst one another, but after the summit, we've connected to one another more than ever before. Our community finally feels seen, and we couldn't be happier. It's unfortunate that it took me four years to finally find my people at Niles West, but nonetheless, I'm forever grateful. The Middle Eastern North African Student Summit was long overdue. It needed to happen. So many MENA students at D-219 felt like they didn't have a voice and that they didn't matter, and many of us still feel that way. One summit isn't enough to make lasting progress at D-219. We need at least one summit for the MENA community every single year. I finally felt like I belonged somewhere. I finally felt like my voice was being listened to. I finally stopped feeling alone. If just one summit could cause all this joy and healing, imagine what future summits could do for our community. It's time to start making real change, and that starts with education and unity. Make D-219 a place where MENA students can feel empowered and be proud of who they are, because we need that more than ever if we want to make real progress. Thank you.
Our next commenter is Gabe Dawood.
Hello, D-219 Board of Education. My name is Gabriel Dawood. I'm a senior at Niles West, visual artist, a member of MENA Club, and president of Assyrian Club. I wanted to take the time to express my gratitude towards you for allowing us to have the first-ever Middle Eastern North African or MENA summit. Through my time in high school, I felt as though the district did not have an adequate amount of support for the MENA students. Our community felt neglected, and this was until the MENA summit. Through this initiative, I was given multiple opportunities to represent the Assyrian and wider MENA community, being able to express what I've been keeping in for the past few years. From this, I was able to meet other students who identify as MENA, build strong friendships with them, and more importantly, a sense of solidarity. This event was beautiful in so many ways. It gave us spaces to be ourselves, to talk about the unique challenges we face, to share an incredible experience with each other, and to be in community with one another. It was the first time that we bridged the gap between different MENA cultures and communities at District 219. The energy in the room was incredible and uplifting, and it was certainly one of the most memorable moments of my time in high school. I would like to thank every single district leader who made this event possible and supported our voices. Thank you to Superintendent Moore, Dr. Wells, Dr. Ritter, and Dr. Edwards. Thank you to Ms. Strubing, Ms. Benjamin, and Mr. Parther. Special thanks to Ms. Stallworth, who has been a huge ally for our community for years, from advocating for our Assyrian Language and Culture course and other specific needs to the MENA community, including supporting the creation of the space. I was fortunate enough to attend the incredible Black Teen Summit in solidarity, and I'm so glad that our district is supporting these spaces which are so needed. Ms. Stallworth, thank you for fighting to make sure that all student voices are heard. I would like to give a final thank you to Ms. Hannah and Dean Madi for their incredible leadership in molding the space to be the incredible success it was. We would not have been able to do it without you. Let me just say that. As someone who has been advocating for the Assyrian community since middle school, it feels so rewarding to be graduating, knowing that future MENA students will be able to have these spaces. I hope to see the MENA Student Summit, the Black Teen Summit, and other similar spaces continue year after year. Thank you.
Our next commenter is Farah Al-Bayati.
My name is Farah Al-Bayati, and I'm in the 11th grade. I'm in Arab. I would casually and incompletely describe the MENA Summit experience as a Gen Z girl stumbling into a rare and profound community after growing up on whitewashed loneliness and canned insecurities. Myself had no shape or description. I conformed to whatever I was told to be. I desperately wished to bleach my skin. I internalized racism. I went to a predominantly white school full of privileged children, and thus, I was ashamed of my culture, of who I was. I was tight-lipped about my refugee experiences, about the horrors I've witnessed, about where I came from before America, because I would be looked down upon. It gets exhausting being treated like less than dirt when you're in third grade and have an accent, when your teachers give you the same pitiful look when they realize you were born in a war, when those same looks turn into not-so-carefully-concealed despise when I say "Araqi," because "Araqi" means "9/11." Araqi meant death. It meant American tragedy. Araqi means my homeland. It does not have anything to do with ill-conceived perceptions from ignorant minds. Their loathing for me, a child, permeated their speech. I was convinced that if I hated myself the loudest, no one could hate me more. But I stand here today to tell you, I am no American tragedy. Niles West gifted me a place where I could find people who looked like me, spoke like me. I found out my culture should be celebrated, not hidden. The MENA Summit was one of the first times I proudly stood among my people and wore my defiance to stereotypes as armor. I'm looking around during this event, and I realize I can understand the dialects, and I don't have to worry so much about where I'm from, what I've seen, and what I've heard. I imagine that auditorium was like a sunny backyard for most people. There is no thinking. There is nothing to figure out. We are a congregation kneeling for one another, allowing ourselves to step outside of our tunnel visions and encouraging others to do the same. We cried together. We knew each other's suffering. We understood our differences and named them similarities. I had forgotten how to surrender. There, I could raise a white flag and rest on people I could trust. I connected, and I learned. I hugged people as if it was my first and my last. I sighed with relief. We spat out hope. We spent a day healing. The MENA Summit was an epiphany to me, to my classmates, to my peers, to my teachers. It was a moment in time I will never forget, and I think I speak for everyone when I say that. There's a burden to shoulder when you were born MENA. We are exotified. We are citizens to lands of capitalistic oil. We are forgotten. We are pushed to the side. We get blamed. We are ridiculed. We are asked 100 times where our country is. We are the epicenter of wars. We make headlines on news channels for all the wrong reasons. But the summit was a space to hug myself, to hug others, and scream, "We did it! We get to live! We are people too!" That day, I learned life is a good friend and a good teacher. It ages you to argue. It ages you to get terrified all the time. To be able to gather annually and advance into a future where we get to break down barriers and lower our hands from our ears is a step towards a peaceful future our schools so urgently demand for. This is how we begin to break generational trauma and systemic racism. We listen to each other. We make our marks in history so big that we won't be able to be ripped out of textbooks this time. You will know our names, because we're terrorists whispering "Alhamdulillah" when we join that dafkas circle. Would we grip each other's hands in solidarity as we listen to one another's stories? Would we share dhulman, a cup of chai? Would we find peace in a place that we thought was so full of fear and anger and trauma? If we are so confined to our spaces, would we ever learn to love so fully? Thank you.
Beautiful, beautiful. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our next commenter, Peter Mistousis.
Hello, members of the Board. My name is Peter Mistousis. I am a junior at Niles West High School. I am Palestinian-American. As a MENA student, I feel welcome at school. It's very easy for me to make new friends, because we're all from the same culture. I'm very welcomed within the MENA population between the student and faculty at school. Outside of the MENA populations, too, I feel welcomed within my peers. I feel included with all cultures and identities at Niles West. At the MENA Summit, I enjoyed the entire day. It left a deep impact on me. I personally like how all cultures of MENA were included. Everyone was welcome, no matter what, what they look like, what their skin color is, or their sexuality. We were all welcomed. I really liked the aspect of the summit. It brought everyone together. My favorite part of the summit was after the lunch, when we danced, when we danced and we were all together. My favorite part, we did specific dances like "Hega" from Assyrian culture. We did "Depge" from Palestinian culture. There were songs also that weren't just from one part of the Middle Eastern region, and I enjoyed that, too. It was another thing I liked about the summit is how I made new friends from north. It was comfortable knowing that I had culture, or like, people of my culture were also at other schools and not just at mine. I think the summit gave MENA students a realization and comfort to know that they can be who they are and not ashamed of. I remember before the summit, Ms. Hannah and Dean Madi held the discussion between students at West to explain the idea of a summit, and I really enjoyed that. In that discussion, a lot of people opened up to their past experiences, both positive and negative, and those experiences really connected the group. Also, during the summit, we had panels talk about their experience with... Also during the summit, we had panels talk about their experience with MENA, what it's like being MENA, and these stories really affected me personally. I felt like I wasn't alone to have these feelings about being MENA. Although some stories were sad, I feel like after the summit, I had more pride in my culture, more empathy for the other cultures represented and other peers. I think this summit was a very important event, not just to MENA population but for the whole student body. The summit taught me and others so much about what it means to be included in MENA. I think MENA is important to have every year, as well as other summits like Black Teen Summit and new summits too. It will help bring knowledge of all cultures represented at West. The summit occurring every year would welcome the new incoming freshmen of class of 28, 29 to know what it means to be MENA and to have pride and not be ashamed to be MENA. And to be grateful to be in an inclusive community at D-219 that brings all MENA students together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Marie Najjar.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marie Najjar, and I'm a senior at Niles West, and I identify as Assyrian-American. I wanted to attend tonight's meeting to say thank you to District 219 for supporting the MENA Student Summit last month, especially Student Intendant Moore, our district leaders, and Dr. Ritter and Mr. Parthor. The MENA Student Summit was one of the best events I have attended at Niles West High School. It was an amazing day full of healing, learning, culture, and joy. We all left the event on a very high note, feeling more connected to our identities and each other more than ever. I was on the student panel, and I was nervous about sharing my story and my family's experiences, but it was a beautiful experience. We all got emotional and bonded over each other in a way we hadn't had the opportunity to in my four years here. We listened to each other, cried together, and then danced together to celebrate our resilience and who we are. It's not easy being part of the MENA community. Syria, my home country, is a country in constant conflict. My mornings consist of my mom going on social media and learning another passing of another friend or relative. When I think of my country, I can only see war and destroyed cities. When I think of my people, I only see innocent people raving a journey across the ocean to find safety in a faraway land. When I think of the future of my country and my people, well, it's hard to see any future at all. The recent earthquakes that struck Syria were devastating. They left me feeling so angry and heartbroken. Why has so much of the world's suffering and sadness been packed into a small country in the Middle East? Why must Assyrian people who have already suffered too much suffer again and again and again? Why do I get to live in a life of freedom and safety, but someone just like me has had a life of suffering, terror, and displacement? These are questions I'm not sure there will ever be answers to, but these are the stories we carry. These are stories, like so many others, that I bring with me every day when I show up to Niles West. I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to share these stories and share space with other MENA students at Niles West. I want to again thank everyone who made it possible for us to come together, to all the staff who supported us, and I want to say that I hope to see these initiatives continue in the future. Thank you again.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Michael Messer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Messer, and I'm a member of MENA Club's Leadership Council. I'm a proud Palestinian-American and a senior at Niles West. Like my fellow MENA Club members, I would like to express my gratitude and appreciation for the district's support of the MENA Student Summit that was held last month. It was a wonderful and uplifting experience for so many of us. Looking back at my time here at Niles West, I can honestly say that was one of the best days I've ever had at school. More importantly, it was the first time in my life that school embraced my cultural identity. I really hope this event will be the turning point for how MENA community is viewed here. There was more than 300 students who attended, and I hope that shows how much the space was needed. I'd like to thank the board, Superintendent Moore, and all of our district leaders who made this event possible. A special thanks to Ms. Benjamin, Mr. Kosiba, and Mr. Parthor for always standing up for us, not just with this event, but always. There were two major issues that we discussed at the MENA Student Summit and things we would like to see changed here at D-219 to make sure that MENA students are better supported and that our needs are better understood. The first is the way that we are categorized at the district level. Recently, a board member shared online the current student demographics at District 219. According to the data, he shared 41% of D-219 students are white, 34% identify as Asian, 14% identify as Hispanic, and 7% identify as black. There is no category for Middle Eastern students. Therefore, we are completely erased in the data. Our identities are erased. Our experiences are erased. And as a result, our specific needs are ignored. Palestinians, Assyrians, Arabs, Iranians, Afghans, and other MENA groups are all lumped into the white category, even though our experiences aren't white, nor are we treated as if we were white. There's a lot of advocacy right now for the new federal category under Middle Eastern and North African. Separate from the white category, this change would mark a major achievement for MENA communities who have long advocated for a separate checkbox. My concern is that this might take a long time and that our community here will continue to be lost in the data. I'm hoping that District 219 will be a leader and take steps to ensure that we are properly accounted for and represented at the district level. The addition of a MENA category here will allow us to more accurately report our identities and would have a positive impact on representation at D-219. It will help the district identify and support our needs, and it will help you understand our student body better. I hope that we can make this change sooner rather than later. The second item we would like to see is a new Arabic language course offering. We were so thrilled to see the board vote to approve the Assyrian Language Program at Niles North and Niles West. This is a major step forward and a huge win for the Assyrian community and the broader MENA community. We hope to build on this work and offer the same opportunity for those wishing to study Arabic. For those with MENA heritage, it would give us the unique opportunity to study our language and connect to our culture. For others, it's a great way to explore a new language that is in high demand in the professional world and learn about a new culture. The benefits are endless, including study abroad opportunities. More importantly, an Arabic language course would reflect well on District 219's values of inclusivity as well as diversity. It will give MENA students at our school the sense of belonging that we are in need of. There is certainly a lot of interest in this course, including a large Arabic-speaking population at District 219, including Arab-Americans and others, and a large Muslim population who rely on reading Arabic for holy texts. We hope that the district will recognize and support the need for this course. I would like to say that these two proposals would be significant steps that can be taken at a district level to support and uplift MENA students. I'm graduating next month, but I hope to see these changes made for these future classes. But once again, I would like to thank you for your support of the MENA Student Summit. It gave me and many others hope that the future here will be different.
Thank you. Our final in-person commenter is Caroline Bulicki.
My name is Caroline Bulicki, and I am a resident and constituent of the Nile Township High School District 219. I am here today to ask you again to investigate the conduct of District 219 Board of Education Member Joseph S. Noick in his capacity as an elected official. I believe that Member Noick has consistently violated the First Amendment rights of his constituents by blocking individuals on his District 219 affiliated Facebook page and Twitter account. A simple internet search for District 219 and Joseph Noick immediately brings up a Facebook account called Joseph S. Noick, D-219 School Board Member. On this page, one can find links to District 219 Board of Education meeting packets, suggestions that readers make public comments or email the board president, photos of Niles North and Niles West students, including one of my own, logos for all four Nile Township schools and programs, requests for feedback, and endorsements for three candidates in the April 4, 2023, school board election. In 2019, the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that the interactive portion of a public official's Facebook page is a quote-unquote "public forum," so an official cannot block people from it because of the opinions they hold. The American Civil Liberties Union and its state chapters have written extensively about this ruling. The ACLU wrote that people who hold public office are subject to the limits of the First Amendment places on the government whenever they're doing government work, and that includes any time that they're controlling a Facebook page they maintain in their official roles. When a public official uses a Facebook page as a tool of governance, that is, when he uses it to inform the public about his government work, solicits input on policy issues through the page, and swaths it in the trappings of his office, he is controlling the page as a government actor. Member Noick is using his Joseph S. Noick, D-219 School Board Member Facebook page as a tool of governance and violating my First Amendment rights by blocking me from commenting on it. If this were not egregious enough, I believe that Member Noick has repeatedly violated the policies of this body, including Policy 280, which requires that board members agree to avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety which could result from the position, and not use board membership for personal gain or publicity, among other things. Policy 2105, which states in part, "No board member or employee shall intentionally use any district property or resources in connection with any political activity." Policy 825, which states in part, "No individual or entity may advertise or promote its interests by using the names or pictures of the school district, any district's school or facility, staff, members, or students except as authorized by and consistent with administrative procedures and approved by the board." On October 20, 2020, Member Noick voted aye to a resolution affirming adherence to Board Policy 280. I'm here to remind Member Noick and the rest of you that the same rules apply to his conduct in and outside of the District 219 boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we'll have April read the digital comments.
There were two online comments. The first one is from Kayanat Bahadur. My name is Kayanat Bahadur from Afghanistan. I want to start with an Islamic greeting, Assalamu Akalakum. And I'm a Niles West freshman student. I'm sorry I can't be there with you in person. I came from Afghanistan, a country that is rich in cultures and beautiful traditions. I came to Niles West High School August 17, 2022, the best state of my life, actually. I came as a lucky girl among millions of girls that are denied education under the Taliban power. I heard a lot about how people treat Muslims in the USA and how they treat Muslim students in US schools. For your information, I didn't hear nice things, but the things I heard with the things I'm seeing right now are totally different. From the first day I put my feet in Niles West, I didn't see anything except love, friendship, support, sympathy, and humbleness. I love Niles West. Before, I didn't know about MENA Club, but now that I know, I really love Niles West and to be in Niles West. I really liked how Niles West's people support the pain teenagers of the world, especially Middle Eastern students. I like how they listened and felt about what we went through. I love this intimate space created by the summit. I like this space where everyone joins hands to show freedom and solidarity. Yes, it is true that I am new among these loved ones, but even for a day, I realized how great MENA space is. I really enjoy seeing everyone working together sisterly and brotherly regardless of religion, culture, and race. I hope your shine will last, and you will always shine like the moon in the sky. Thank you. And then the last comment is from Matt Temkin. Dear Superintendent and Board, once again, I am asking you to hold Mr. Noick accountable for his unethical and illegal social media actions. Mr. Noick continues to run a private Facebook page that presents himself as a board member, not a personal Facebook page, discussing board business, his opinions on the district, electioneering for his preferred candidates, all the while engaging in disparaging comments towards community members, towards candidates for D-219 board positions, as well as spreading misinformation. Mr. Noick blocks constituents on a regular basis and allows only certain community members to interact with him. Despite my inquiry with the board and other entities, the board refuses to hold Mr. Noick accountable. I would like to remind the board that Mr. Noick's actions are a violation of the First Amendment, and there is applicable case law that states elected officials cannot block constituents they do not want to interact with. I would also like to remind the board that current members of the board, including Mr. Noick, voted to censure former board member Jill Manrique for far less online social media actions. Many of us in the community are tired of being thwarted in our attempts to interact with an elected official, and we are tired of Mr. Noick's disdain for anyone who questions him publicly. You can hold Mr. Noick accountable if you have the will. Thank you.
Thank you, April. That ends the comments section of the meeting. Thank you to all the visitors and their comments. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. We'll wait till they leave. Yeah, go ahead. We're going to take like a two-minute break while people end up... We're gonna go ahead and restart, okay? So our next section is our student representatives, and we're gonna start with Amira from Niles West.
Good evening. Good evening, D two nineteen board and community. With less than six weeks left of the school year, this past month has been jam-packed with activities. As previously mentioned, mid-March, Niles West hosted its first-ever Middle Eastern/North African Summit. Here, students shared their experiences with discrimination and their journeys to preserve their cultural identity. There was also a panel of students from Mena backgrounds titled "The Stories That Shape Us." Soon after, Niles West hosted its annual International Festival Showcase to conclude International Week. There were songs, dances, and attire from numerous cultures from Bosnia to China. This showcase was truly a celebration of all the different cultural identities at Niles West. In late March, D two nineteen Communications and Partnerships Team hosted its third annual Black Teen Summit. This year, it was themed "Young, Gifted, and Black" to uplift Black students across the community. And just last week, Muslim Student Association hosted their first Ramadan Day community event. Here, the D two nineteen community joined Muslim students in one day of fasting for the month of Ramadan. This past month, student government has been busy with end-of-the-year preparation. We have successfully chosen the distinguished alumni and plan to choose the recipient of the ZEMSKI Award by the end of this month. Student government is also working hard to plan the senior send-off and the annual banquet for the end-of-the-year celebration. As the school year comes to a close, many clubs are beginning to wind down. CEC successfully hosted one of its last inclusion parties for the spring, and it was a hit. DEBATE competed in its last tournament titled "The Tournament of Champions to Finish Off a Successful Season." Lastly, Model United Nations attended its final conference of the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year at Northwestern University and was awarded Outstanding Small Delegation. Students are anxiously preparing for finals and AP exams as the last day quickly approaches. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we're Sam Rhodes from Niles North.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and the District two nineteen community. This month is Middle Eastern and North African Heritage Month. And this year, Niles North is celebrating with the theme "Through the Eyes of MENA Identities", with a mission to include as many Middle Eastern and North African voices as possible in our celebration. A calendar has been created, which includes many articles and guest speakers to honor and celebrate Middle Eastern and North African heritage and culture. This calendar can be found in students' emails, through the daily newsletter, or on the Niles North website under Student Activities, so definitely check it out. One of our exciting events this month is our annual Unity Assembly, which will take place tomorrow and will feature performances and contributions from various identity and cultural groups from around the school. Last month, students were able to enjoy the forty-sixth Annual District College Fair, in which they were able to check out over two hundred different colleges and universities. In addition, a couple of weeks ago, students were able to attend a Focus on Your Future Career and Job Expo to learn about career options that do not require a college degree. They were able to meet with over eighty representatives from a wide range of local companies, organizations, and educational institutions. Last week, students had SAT and PSAT testing, and we are also approaching finals and AP exams. Student Council recognizes the toll this busy season can have on some students' mental health, and because of that, we are hosting our annual Mental Health Panel soon. The Mental Health Panel will be a collaboration event with the Mental Health Education Club to educate on student-centered well-being and feature topics such as stigma, stress management, and how to reach out. Furthermore, as we look ahead, Teacher Appreciation Week is in May, and the Student Council will be hosting its annual Teacher of the Year Celebration. This is an opportunity for students to vote on the teacher that has had the greatest impact on them this year and show their appreciation towards that person. We've already received over two hundred and seventy votes, and I cannot wait to see who the winner is this year. Finally, I just want to remind everyone that through the end of the year and beyond, I, along with my fellow Student Council members, will continue to be a voice for the students, especially those who may not always be heard. We will continue to relay updates and concerns to the Board so that they can be acted upon to improve our school community, ensure that all students feel welcomed and safe in our learning environment. Thank you and good night.
Thank you both. So we're gonna move on to the regular agenda. Just a fair warning, it's a very long agenda for those who are planning on staying with us, so you might be here for a while. Just wanted to give you the option to leave if you need to. All right. Does anyone need to pull an item off the consent agenda? No. Okay, we're gonna keep it as is. All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, or a motion to approve consent agenda? What is... Is this like the same one?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. So this is the same one. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, or a motion to approve consent items? Can I get a motion? Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Fleen?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez? Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, our first item, it looks like a discussion. It's an AVID report, and will be presented by Dr. Luana Wells.
Okay. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I am joined by Team AVID here. We have our building coordinators. For Niles North, we have Katie Kanokada. For Niles West, we have Suzanne Van Kersen. And then we have wonderful students from both buildings who will be kind of joining in the party tonight. So really, our goal for today is just to kind of really explain what AVID is, and then AVID's impact. AVID is something that... Where is Dr. Edwards? Dr. Edwards, in twenty seventeen, mentioned this program, and then it became research. So we researched what it was about. We had board members there. I remember Board Member Naima Abraham there and so forth, student committees, and even our former IMSA students for twenty seventeen and eighteen do research on the program. And it has been in place at Niles North now for four years, and then Niles West for three years. And so today, we're gonna just go over two parts of what AVID is. One, its impact, looking at our data. And then, secondly, just what is the experience of being in an AVID classroom? So I just want to bring your attention to the memo on the screen. So Section one is who is in AVID. So the data for Niles North is for students who identify as Hispanic or Latinx. We have a total of forty-five AVID students out of two hundred. And in comparison to all students who identify as Latinx or Hispanic, three hundred and forty-three, which is roughly thirteen percent of students in AVID who identify as Hispanic or Latinx. For American Indian and Alaskan Native, we don't currently have students at Niles North included, but they will be. And then for Asian students, we have ten percent of our population. For Black, African American at Niles North, sixteen percent. And for White, eight percent. Two or more races would be eight percent. And all students overall who are enrolled in AVID at Niles North is ten percent. Now, just to pause for a moment, who is in AVID? We're looking at the racial demographic and the ethnic breakdown, but it also is a criteria. These are students who are all in the academic middle. So often, for school programs, you will see that there are interventions if students are struggling, or you will see enrichment if students are in honors or AP courses. But what do you do for students who are in the academic middle, meaning our C students, our students who can be that A student if they are given those tools and these secrets? So what we do is we look for incoming eighth-grade students from both feeder schools, and we look for students who would be first-generation college students, meaning they'd be the first in their family to go to college. We look for students of color. We look for students whose home language originally was not English, or they're multilingual. And then we also look for students who are experiencing financial hardship. And what they learn in AVID is how to advocate for themselves, but then also how school works. And then, we encourage them to kind of push themselves forward so that they can see who they can be if limits and oppression aren't put on them. So going back to our data, we see that our Niles North students have a representation of our multiple demographics in the district. If you look at Niles West, I'll scroll down to page two for you. Niles West, it started one year after. So what you'll see here is our Latinx students, a little bit lower at four percent. Our Asian students, four percent. Black African American students, five percent. Native Hawaiian or Other Pacific Islander, sixteen percent. White students, three percent. Two or more races, four percent. And overall, students who are in AVID are about three percent. Now, we have recruited more students, so these numbers will change as of August. Section two has to do with academic success. And what this does is it compares where students are when they come in as eighth graders. So as I said before, we look at the academic middle. So the academic middle would be students in their eighth-grade year, their SAT score or their MAP score has a right-in-the-middle range of achievement. And what we do is our AVID students are usually slightly lower when they start, but then they catch up and kill it. Isn't that correct? Yep, keep nodding. So if you look at Niles North, if we just start at the bottom, you'll see that our PSAT eight, I want you to see the difference between their freshman year and their eighth-grade year. So coming in as freshmen, our current freshman students, you would see PSAT nine, which is a score of eight seventy-eight point four three. That is almost a hundred percent increase from their eighth-grade year. So they increased about ninety points just in one year after being in the AVID program. You'll see the same comparison when you look at our tenth and our PSAT eleventh scores. For our AVID students, nine hundred. You'll see non-AVID, nine forty, but keep in mind, students came in below, and they are closing that gap. So by their senior year, what is a story? Well, that's where we get to our GPAs on page three. So really quick on North, just to, I'm sorry, West, to review the PSAT. Once again, freshman students came in at an eight three four point seven three, and then they went up to an eight ninety-five just in one academic year. And then our non-AVID students, eight forty-one, and went up to nine oh six. For our PSAT ten, that would be AVID students, nine forty-six point six two, and then non-AVID, nine three two. So if you're thinking, what does this mean? It means that, yes, our students are in our middle score, but they are increasing in their achievement. And by their graduation year, you see the steady improvement. So if we look at the Section two, this is academic success for overall GPAs. So in this section, Table five and six, they compare the GPAs of AVID students and non-AVID students. What I want to point out, AVID is an elective, so it is a system of learning that students are in for one class period. The way in which the system is taught, we'll get into the details in a moment, but that is something that's transferable, because it's skills, it is a system of learning. So it's not a course, it's a mindset on how to achieve equitably in schools. So Niles North, GPA for students who are our current freshmen, those who are in AVID are three point zero five GPA in comparison to other students in the academic middle who have a two point eight nine GPA average. Class of two thousand twenty-five, or our sophomores, AVID students, three point one five in comparison to three point one zero for our overall students at North. Our current juniors at North, three point two seven in AVID and three point two six non-AVID. Niles West, if you look at our freshman students, AVID students, two point nine seven. So I know you're thinking, this is a lot of data, but to follow up, we talked about a couple of months ago, how do we know that systems of equity work? How do we know that anti-bias works? AVID is an anti-bias program. It charts students who would be left out. It gives them the tools strategically, and it brings in who they are as people to create that family. So let's continue. AVID students, class of two thousand twenty-six at West, two point nine seven in comparison to non-AVID students who are in the academic middle, two point two five. Class of two thousand twenty-five, three point three one if you are in AVID, two point seven nine for non-AVID students. Class of two thousand twenty-four, three point one eight, AVID students, non-AVID students, two point two one. GPAs are still good in both categories, but we're seeing how the AVID elective impacts learning. The biggest area of impact were students broken down by ethnic and racial category. So I'm just gonna take a moment to read Section two to you directly. Table seven and eight show the grade point averages for students disaggregated by race and ethnicity. The GPAs of BIPOC, or Black Indigenous People of Color students, or students of color enrolled in AVID are higher than their peers who share the same racial and ethnic background, indicating the need for AVID strategies to grow beyond the AVID elective to overall school systems, which we are all aware of. As we continue, innate in the AVID curriculum are the following effective components of anti-bias learning, culturally responsive teaching strategies, activities to build relational rapport. As you heard students from MENA speak, they talked about feeling included and seen, that is relational capacity. Students learn more when they feel seen. As we continue, also socio-emotional strategies, knowing like their histories and what they've been through and how they are seen in our curriculum. And then, research-based instructional strategies for best practices for high school instruction. So for GPA, the story here is interesting. If you look at the class of two thousand twenty-six, our current freshman, if you identify as Hispanic, Latino, or Latinx, GPA is two point eight one for AVID students, non-AVID two point five three. Class of two thousand twenty-five, two point six four, AVID, two point six six nine, non-AVID. Class of two thousand twenty-four, three point two seven for AVID, two point nine nine for non-AVID. I'm not gonna go through each one of them, but I just wanted to point out, if you look at students in particular, we have noticed that students who identify as Black or Latinx, we have seen that improvement really stand out in the AVID program. So Hispanic students having a three point two seven their junior year is profound. As we look also at our AVID Asian and non-AVID Asian students, three point two one for class of two thousand twenty-six, three point one five for non-AVID students. If we skip down to Black or African American, if you're in AVID, let's say, two thousand twenty-five, three point zero two GPA if you're in AVID, two point six nine if you are not. AVID for White students, three point four five, three point two eight for students who are non-AVID for academic middle. For Niles West, same breakdown, similar story, Hispanic, Latinx, if you're in AVID, two point five one, not in AVID, academic middle, two point three eight. If we look at, let's say, Asian, three point nine three, class of two thousand twenty-six for AVID students, two point nine seven non-AVID. AVID for Black or African American, class of two thousand twenty-six, three point five seven if you are in AVID, non-AVID is one point seven two. AVID for White students, class of two thousand twenty-six, meaning our freshman students, two point seven one, non-AVID, three point one zero for White students who are in AVID. So what does this all mean? It is the intention of the Equity Department and Administration to broaden the reach of the AVID system of learning. By increasing the number of teachers who are AVID-trained, we are seeing the benefits of the AVID strategies. Those strategies can go beyond the AVID elective to AVID content teachers. So efforts to get more people AVID-trained is a focus. Additionally, for any teachers who are watching online, if you're thinking, hmm, I have SLOs next year, which are those student learning objectives, like how do I target students and I want their grades to increase, what are some strategies? Well, you can do AVID strategies. They work. So as we continue, overall, our goal is to grow our program, and then we want to continue supporting first-generation college students, students of color, and our students whose language of origin was other than English, as well as other underrepresented groups. We are proud of the successful implementation of the AVID elective. Thank you, team. And now, we're gonna move towards... And now we're going to move towards Avid schoolwide. I just want to turn it over to our Avid coordinators, and they're going to rock it like they always do. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wells. And hello, Niles West, D219, sorry, D219 Board. My name is Suzanne Van Kersen, and I am the Avid Coordinator at Niles West. And I just want to say, I've never talked about Avid without crying, and I know that today will follow suit, so bear with me. And it's because every number that Dr. Wells just went over, there's a student and a story behind, and it's not just their life that's changed, it's every life that they impact that's better because they're better because of Avid. And one of the reasons that Avid is so successful is because the mission of Avid aligns with the mission of the district. We're looking to do the same thing. We want to create opportunities that advance all students so that they're prepared in high school and for life beyond, and for success in that global society. That's another common theme. And throughout our presentation, you're going to hear the echoes of Superintendent Moore's vision of clear paths, bright futures, and no limits.
My name's Katie Konokada. I'm the Avid Coordinator at Niles North. Thanks for having us. We're really happy to be here with our students. Avid is a framework. Our students are in our Avid elective course that Dr. Wells described, but it is much more than that. If you look at the triangle on the slide, this is a collection of well-researched best practices. Avid didn't invent these best practices, but they very intentionally and strategically married them together so that we're not just talking about good teaching, we're talking about good systems, culture, and great leadership. And it gives us the tools to do these things so that students get what they need. There's a quote up here from Mary Catherine Swanson. She was the founder of Avid in 1980. This quote says, "Rigor without support is a prescription for failure. Support without rigor is a tragic waste of potential." This feels like my exploration in teaching, noticing these things. And we think that this quote really sums up what we're doing with our program and with our team. This is what happens when our team works within our framework that's projected up here. So the heart of this framework is high expectations and high support, not just for the students, but for the educators involved as well. As educators, if you look at the darker blue strand at the bottom, there are four things we operate under. We insist on rigor, break down barriers, align our work, and advocate for students. When we intentionally do these things, students get what they need. Avid and our district believes our students need rigorous academic prep. They need to be agents for themselves, student agency, and opportunity knowledge to see themselves in spaces and see themselves in spaces in and outside of our district. What I'd like to do now is focus on how are students getting this? And we'll have them share some of their voices, so you can go ahead and go on to the next slide. So rigorous academic prep, what does that look like in the Avid elective? WICER is our acronym. Everything we do is through writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. You can see some pictures up there of our students at both schools. The masks have mostly come off, so you can tell we've been around from the pandemic. Three days a week, on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, our Avid curriculum intentionally provides students with academic skills so that they can be rigorous in college and career experiences. What we do is we explore identity, their involvement in school and the community, leadership, career and college pathways. All of this is learned through really highly collaborative practices. We do this through critical reading strategies, various formats of writing, they write about themselves, test-taking strategies, seminars, research, debate, those are fun, organization, time management, goal setting, using sources to support their opinions. These are just a few of the things we do over the four years in our elective. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we talk about study groups and we have college tutors. Most of our college tutors are alumni of our district. Many of them are aspiring teachers. What a great way to get them back here in our community. The tutors you'll hear about from our students, but what we do on those days is we really combine the skills that we're teaching in Avid with the stuff they're doing in their rigorous courses outside of the Avid elective. Focus note taking and tutorials are the name of the game on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we have someone here who'll introduce herself and talk a little bit more about what those days feel like.
Hi, my name is Summer Cortezano. I'm a junior in Niles North High School, and I'm going to be talking about tutorial groups. So Tutorial Groups has taught me and other students in Avid leadership skills and initiative skills, and also taught me and the other students to have courage to ask and answer questions in and out of our Avid classrooms. It also allowed us to build a community where we are comfortable enough to ask each other whenever we need help on something or a question when you, the other person could answer. And yeah.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you so much for sharing that, Summer. And I just want to say something that's cool to see about Avid is they don't start out as the students that would sit here and talk to adults, but they grow into that, and they have that courage because of Avid. So thank you so much for sharing. Another big piece of Avid is opportunity knowledge. So helping students through the curriculum and experiential learning to understand more about themselves, about what they want and what they need, and what the various options are so that they can make informed decisions. And the cool thing is that it doesn't just help them to make better informed decisions, but it also equips them to go home and have those conversations with their families so that they can really make... A lot of times, students will say like, oh, you know, my siblings went here or did this just because someone else did, and they said it was a good idea. But Avid students are able to sort of have a more informed, more personalized decision-making because they actually know more about themselves and more about what's out there, and are able to bring that home to those discussions so that everybody's on board with a more personalized decision. And I'm going to let Peter talk because he'll say it much better than me.
Hello, everyone. My name is Peter Rassam, and I am a junior in Niles West, and I'll be talking about opportunity knowledge. So many of us have a dream college in mind before we even come into Avid, but it's not really based off reality because we don't think about the factors like if the college has the major we want for our careers, or if it has the resources and the environment that we need to be successful there throughout the four years. Avid not only gives us in-class resources to learn about our personalities and college fit, but also helps us connect to real-world experiences. Before even going out to schools, we took a survey to learn about our preferences and heard from guest speakers. Then we went out to colleges to get a firsthand view of what it would be like to go to that school. For example, I loved being on a large, open campus, but I wasn't crazy about the idea of being in a class with 200 students. I would prefer smaller class sizes so you could be engaged with the teacher. Although we don't get to visit every college in the world, we visit a variety of schools to get general understandings of class size, environment, resources, so we can determine which college would make a good fit for us and truly find our dream school.
Thank you. And again, the cool thing about that is even though if students can't see themselves on the specific campuses that we visit, to quote another student that's going to speak, she said, "I can't see myself going to school here, but I can see myself in school." And that brings us to another component, which is student agency. It's a really fancy way to say leadership, student voice, making informed decision, and lifting yourself and others up. When students have agency, they believe in and activate their own potential. They opt in to rigorous classes. They persist through obstacles. They feel comfortable doing things they wouldn't normally do, like speaking to the school Avid students feel seen and heard, and it makes them not only want more from themselves, but give more to each other. And I'm going to let Nadia talk a little bit more about her experience of leadership.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nadia, and I'm a junior at Niles West. Avid has given me the opportunity to step up and take on leadership roles inside and outside the classroom. In class, I lead our circle where we go over our plan for the day, and out of class, I've had the opportunity to go to middle schools and interview potential Avid students. Without Avid, I would have never felt comfortable taking on these opportunities. Avid has made me channel my leadership skills I never knew I had. It opens my mind to take on important roles in and outside my school community. Avid has given me long-lasting life skills. I hope to spread our Avid-like characteristics amongst others in our schools and D219. This program has made me a better program... Oh, I'm sorry. This program has made me a better person and helps me help others, which I feel is my purpose. Thank you, Ms. Vee and Ms. Konokada, for making us better people and future leaders in our society.
Can I share a quick anecdote? Last Friday, there was a college field trip for juniors to Northern Illinois University, and last minute, Avid North students got a permission slip. And I was in a meeting with Suzanne, and Nadia sent her a message saying, hey, the students at North told me about this field trip, and I know you're going to be out. Would you like me to handle the field trip slips for you so we can go too? So they're connecting because of that HBCU trip, and they're still advocating to get as many people on campuses when opportunities come up. We don't even have to do it anymore.
And I, another anecdote about Nadia was the students that we've recruited that are adding to our numbers at Niles West, Nadia was part of the team that went out and did that. They interviewed the students, they screened them for the characteristics that they see fit Avid students. And after we interviewed our first student at Fairview, Nadia said, you know, there's a lot of us, and they're only in eighth grade, and I think we're coming across a little intense. I think we should change our approach and start with just a few questions to get, like to get to know them and maybe tell them a little bit about ourselves so they're more comfortable. And her ability to read the room and adjust on the fly just blew me away. And again, that's, I don't, when I met Nadia at the beginning of last year, I don't think she would have, she would have known that, she would have seen that, but she wouldn't have felt like she could say it. And that's what Avid has given her, is a voice.
Thanks. So coming back to our triangle, we want to tell you where we are right now with our Avid community. We call it an Avid family, but it's a community. And notice, in my 17 years in teaching, this is the first time I have worked on a team where cross-buildings, I feel like I'm connected. It's not just a Niles North program or a Niles West program, we're really intentionally working as a district-wide program. So right now, here we are, 286 students, 22 educators comprised of teachers, counselors, admin, and that's at all parts, district and building-based. 10 tutors, and each of us as educators are working really strategically with well-defined roles and specific responsibilities so that we can lift each other up. Everyone is trained and brought expertise to the team that other people don't have. When we do this, we're ensuring that students are getting the things you're hearing them say. You see the yellow band wrapped around the triangles, and that's relational capacity. This is what we're rooted in. We're rooted in strong relationships. It's not a teacher-student relationship. It is student-to-student. It is administrator-to-student. I know the Niles West students, even though I don't work in that building. We work really hard on that. Our team is a community, our classrooms are communities, and one of my favorite juniors is here to bring it on home with her experience in this community and the relationships.
My relationship with Avid as a program and with Avid faculty improved my life in so many ways in and out of school. After the pandemic, I was very, very close-minded about Avid and with the tutors in my class. And Ms. Konokada, they pushed me to understand what Avid really is and how it's going to help me in life. They really pushed me because I second-guess a lot of things that I'm going to do, and they just made me grow as how I am as a person now. Because of my relationships with Avid faculty, my Avid counselor, Ms. Pickett, made me have this meeting with a college counselor, Ms. G S., who is also an Avid. And I was second-guessing the whole thing. I didn't know if I actually wanted to do it. I was like, what am I even going to talk about? And I told Ms. Konokada that, and Ms. Konokada was like, just give it a try, like, see what you're going to get out of this meeting. And I've never been so happy to get out of a meeting because that meeting changed my aspect on what's going to happen in my future. And Ms. G S. really opened a door for me. Ms. G S. really opened a door for me that I never knew was there, and I'm really happy to just overall be in this program. Thanks.
So we cultivate relationships. It's not just the first week of school that we're doing that. It is really intentional. And yes, is such a great showcase of how far she's come and what she can see in herself. On our Avid team, we are champions for equity. We are actively seeking out what the barriers are, and we are trying to break them down. We are connecting with our students and allowing them to connect with each other. We provide meaningful and challenging learning opportunities for all students. We advocate for them, and it's really contagious. So this seeps out beyond the elective class. If you're a teacher who also teaches math, your math classroom is changing. My math classroom changed so much that I retired from math and do Avid full-time. But it really is contagious, and if you can't get behind what we're doing, I would be shocked because it's things you already know, but it's done in such an intentional way that it makes you feel valuable, and it helps you see students see themselves as valuable, which is what we're here to do. This is starting to permeate beyond our elective classroom, and we're really excited about the progress we've made. We were birthed in the pandemic, and now this year, we're really feeling, seeing our students as upperclassmen. We're going to have our first graduating class at North. We're really excited about where we're headed. So thank you so much for taking time to hear from us, and thank you to our amazing students who took bravery to come up here. And the last, you can click on the last slide. We know this is for discussion, so we're ready to discuss.
Before you have any questions or discussions, I just want to say, in my old district, I wanted Avid, and I never got it across the board. It was one of my big failures. And after being, visiting the Avid classroom here, I've actually been in touch with my replacement at West Hartford, and he was in Chicago for a conference. And I said, yeah, you can't quit on Avid, you got to get it. And I'm quite sure he's going to be visiting next year to see our program as a model. So what you do here will stretch. And you know, I just want to say, everything I believe about education was exemplified in the past 20 minutes by the kids, but also especially, I'd be remiss walking into Suzanne and Katie's classrooms. It's the most welcome I've felt in any classroom coming in. The kids came up to me, talked to me about what they were doing, explained it to me, were able to self-identify what they were working on and why that was what was important for next week. And I've just got to say, relationships, 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 and what is done there is replicable. It is. It can be across everywhere, and you're a shining example, so I just wanted to thank both of you, and so much thanks to our students for coming forward. Because talking about it without you here, that's just us talking. You're showing. So thank you.
I don't know that I have a question, but I was here from the, when you guys were researching it, and I was totally sold on the whole program from day one. I can identify with the type of students that Avid are, which are first-time college from their family. Self-advocacy, something that I didn't have because my parents were immigrants and they didn't go to college, they didn't know how to navigate that, you know, that particular area of life. So for me, it was a win-win, and I'm just hopeful, and I said that from day one to you, and I think everybody in this room, when you first presented this, that I, it is my hope that we continue to grow this program through our student numbers. I just want to see the student numbers increase. I just want to see the student numbers increase all the time because I know there's a real need. And I'm hoping that the recruiting effort is stronger and stronger all the time. The more we get to know the feeder schools, I think the better we will become at recruiting and I, and I thought that from day one. So it's just learning, you know, and, and building those relationships, like you said. So I'm super proud of this program and I'm so thrilled that you guys were here to, um, share your experience with us because that really, um, made us feel what the experience is like from, you know, firsthand experience. So thank you so much for being here tonight. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
A question and a comment. The question is, um, when you were doing the presentation about the, um, the white students, the many students are included in that because I didn't see a category for them, right?
Yes, all of our, um, categories are along with the state designations and so yes.
So does something keep us back from creating this category?
It actually, it does. And I, I've talked to attorneys about it. It came up when one of my first meetings with, um, representative group of Assyrians had talked about this. I'm going to go back and revisit it and actually talk to Naima quickly about this. I think California may be doing something. I'm going to be out there this week and one of my close friends, Superintendent Owen Riverside, because they do break it down differently by state. We're stuck with the state categories and then the federal categories as far as reporting. And instinctively you'd say, well, we can just separate it out ourselves. I need further legal clarification on data privacy rights with that. So that's, more to come on that. Before, I, I didn't get a positive response, but I'm looking for another way around.
Thank you for that. And, and the comment, I mean, what can we say? I mean, this is fantastic. This is one of the things that makes D two nineteen what it is. Despite everything we hear and, uh, all the comments that are sometimes not so nice about D two nineteen, this is one of the things that I'm really proud of that you're doing. Congratulations. Congratulations to the students. I'm very, very happy. This gives me a lot of hope for the future. And also, uh, I have one foot out the door on this board, but I'm sure the new board will be very open to expanding this. So don't be shy to ask for more. Definitely.
Thank you.
Did you hear that, Superintendent Moore?
Tom is in agreement, I'm sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just had a quick question. Where you were talking about the GPAs, what is the max range of the GPA? Are you talking about about four point oh?
We did the standard four point oh.
Okay. So how did we get a four point oh seven for the class of twenty twenty-five?
That, we have the weighted categories and the unweighted, so we did the four point oh. I get what you're saying.
Okay. And then is there a concern that when we look at twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, that our GPA for the non-Avid students is dropping? So our new cohort of students that keep coming into our district are, I mean, let's just take an example. Non-Avid African-American goes from twenty twenty-four at two point five six to twenty twenty-five at two point oh four to twenty twenty-six at a one point seven two GPA. I mean, I, I love what we're doing here right now, but I, you know, are we not trying to catch this before it slides down that when you look at some of the numbers, that when they do go through the Avid program, they get a three point five seven, which is kind of what the Avid class was in the first cohort of group, right? So I'm just concerned, I mean, I see it's great. I mean, I was here for the inception of it all. It's a great thing, but I feel like we're sliding our GPA, like our kids are coming less and less prepared into our district. And is that really actually happening or, or is that just from the graph and it's just a phenomenon? What, what does that seem to be?
Well, anecdotally, just what I've observed, obviously, we have gone through a pandemic. So that has hit the learning loss where we've seen students come in at different areas. What we were highlighting today is that with the Avid program, we're seeing just how that is being mitigated rapidly. In other areas, there's so much we can do and there's so much we are doing. It's going to always go back to outcomes. It's going to always go back to practice and that's why we have the SLOs approved for next year where we can increase teacher capacity and support so that we can have time to work together and more people can learn about Avid strategies and other strategies that work. So we want to target this. We want our students to be better and they're doing great, as you've seen today.
No, I mean, like, I, I was just talking about that and I see both of our coordinators kind of shaking their head and they've noticed that. So like I said, I'm, as long as we're aware of it and we're keeping track of that and what we can do to kind of mitigate that a little bit. So you don't, I mean, it's kind of crazy how far it drops in some of these numbers I'm looking at the stats. So how do we, how do we change that up and make it easier for our, our districts, our staff, everybody else that's sitting here in the district to make sure that we have that common goal? So if there, you know, what is it?
We're both posited on school improvement teams. And so that is a place that we immediately are seeing some of the Avid strategies being woven through, but it's what we're doing in the elective, like Superintendent Moore said, can be done in any classroom. And to go back, it's relationships, relationships. And that's why the triangle's connected with it. If you want students to take risks and see themselves doing challenging things, we have to let them be seen in classrooms with relationships. So yes.
And it does relate. I mean, inherently, my belief is about relationships. And during COVID, that's what was lost. And so this isn't a D two nineteen issue in all honesty. This is an American issue that those kids, um, they're where they are because they weren't and, and to make it even more particular, the historically at-risk children are just more at risk. That's where we see the biggest gaps because those are the ones you are really trying to pull forward with relationships and they had no relationships for two years and, or more. And so it wasn't like they saw limited growth. That cohort saw no growth. So overall, we can talk about reading scores and where they went and plateaus and there, there's some ways we can look at it where, well, it doesn't look that bad. Then when you disaggregate for the disaffected student, that's where the pandemic hit. It, it's almost the most vicious possible way to attack because it didn't attack equally. Because this is those students that we've talked about that were lost. Any district that looks like ours, there's a significant number of students that were unidentified for two years, that just disappeared. In my previous district, we lost two hundred and eighty kids that we could not find, that we went door-to-door, we knocked, we found everything. So what, another after-effect of this, that you're going to say, maybe not here because I've got to check in all honesty about how Illinois does it, but all of a sudden, you're going to see graduation rates plummet in a couple of years from some places because students counted as ninth graders and then were gone. And so you have to count them as dropout and you don't know. So that's going to be the next crisis in America is the number of dropouts or the number of students not graduating. And it still is a function of the pandemic. So we're completely on it. You're right. And those are the exact kids that need that connection from Avid. And that's why it's so important that we keep supporting programs like this and expanding.
Sure. So I mean, just to kind of bring that together, uh, from my understanding, I thought Avid and classrooms first was kind of like part one, part two kind of a thing. It was kind of working together in conjunction to get our kids more prepared for high school and that as well. So, I mean, I'm just hoping that, I'm sure we already have an eye on it and everybody is aware of it. So just how do we get more buy-in for that couple of years that we've lost, right? And make sure that our kids are not going to be stuck in a remedial math and a remedial reading for that much longer and, and whatever we can do, whether, you know, offering more programs in a summer school type of a setting and, and to catch them up and do those things because we already understand, you know, a lot of the kids that after COVID happened, they had to get retested and figure out in the college levels, where do they actually know, right? How much do they, have they learned actually and how much have they not learned? And so this is, the next couple of years is going to be kind of like that rebuilding process. So we just want to make sure that as the board, you know, what are we focusing on and where are we focusing that? And are we giving you guys the right tools and everything else and, and the advocacy that you need to be able to make sure that you're reaching out to all of our students, especially in a, in the impact that we never expected it to kind of happen right here in our middle-range students, right? So that's also another, you know, that we want to just keep aware of and I want to keep tabs of it too. So I just want to make sure that all our kids are successful. But thank you very much for the presentation. You kids are doing awesome and keep going.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say, like, it's, it's that relation, the students connecting with other students. Our enrollment in Avid for this next year will be double what it was this current year because the students who have been in Avid went out and said, hey, this is why it's working for us, you should try it. And that's so much more impactful than me saying, hey, try this thing. And so it's when students, what, what we have now is a few years of evidence, both anecdotal and numbers to match. And so people see that and they go, oh, what are you doing? Tell us more. Kids, go to tell their friends, hey, we're, we're taking notes a certain way, come learn it with us, right? So it's, what, we have what we needed. And I just want to thank you because we do feel supported. I really feel lucky to be doing this for my job in a district where it's seen and valued and supported. So thank you.
Well, thank, thank you.
Well, so, I just have a more of a, like a curious question. So you guys had said that this is for the certain set of students and thank you guys for coming out, um, because now you have my mind raising. How would that expand to the whole district? Like, how would you, is this something that you're rolling out to teachers and you're teaching teachers how to use these Avid, um, like tactics and things? Or is this something that all students would enroll in? Like, how does that expand to the district? Because that's what you guys were saying, right? How do you go bigger? So how do you, how do you make this bigger? Like I said, just curious.
Teachers, teaching other students, I mean, teachers teaching each other, yes. More teachers learning. And again, it's a system and it's a mindset. And then creating space for that ongoing support.
And leadership, it's not just teaching teachers how to teach, it's teaching me how to be a better leader. Leaders are sustaining it, cultivating it throughout the year. We have different definitions of what we do month by month. And so, you know, on our Avid site team at North, we have from the building principal to a brand-new first-year counselor and it's not intimidating. We see each other and the work we're doing. And so that's all important. What the counselors do is really important. They're doing it with all their students. They just happen to have Avid students now and they're trained. Teachers are doing it, you know, if you take notes that are student-centered and the students have a voice in what they're doing in the Avid elective you teach, you're going to do that in your math classroom as well. When Jim Edwards is leading a meeting, maybe he's replicating something he experienced at his Avid training or that he's experiencing weekly at our site team meetings. It's sort of like a way of operating. So it works for every role and Avid has it laid out. That's the nice thing. There's no guesswork. It just kind of brings out the true educator in yourself. If you, it, it allows the freedom for you to bring yourself, but also keep the high expectations.
I, I also think that maybe word of mouth with students and families, um, those who have really good positive experiences with the program actually spread the word. I mean, we live in a community where people all know each other and they all talk to each other, which is really great. I know of one family who, whose student went to this program and was talking about it to somebody else when we went to Easter function. So, um, I, I see a lot of that, which is really nice too. So I think that that's another way that it expands. We just don't really hear about it much.
And we have goals set for this summer to intentionally, what we have brought, our Avid students have become leaders in our school community and we have goals over the summer to set this out for families. So not creating new events for families, but having them become leaders in school events we already have, programming we already have. So we're going to work really intentionally on that goal before next school year and throughout next school year.
And to go back to your question, there's two aspects. One, the students that we target are in the academic middle and they have those features, but the learning style and the research and the high levels and that is something that can be replicated. So we may have specific targets for the elective, but Avid school-wide is just the mindset and the practices carried over. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Being on the board when Avid came to its fruition, um, I think this was the first program that I recall where the focus was on, on the middle. Our district is so good at remedial work for kids who really, really are behind and for the advanced kids that really, really shine. But that middle seemed to be neglected and, and thank you for, for your presentation. I really believe that that's where we're getting a tremendous, tremendous amount of opportunity and growth as our, as our students have demonstrated today. So thank you.
I think, um, we're done with our questions and comments. And thank you so much. You guys did a wonderful job. Thank you, students. And we look forward to seeing you next year. All right, our next item is So our next item is the Niles West tennis courts. It's discussion in action and I believe that's Tim and Ethy. I need to read the whole thing, don't I? Sorry. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the bid from Chicago Paving Contractors, Inc. in the amount of one million twenty-five thousand dollars?
As of moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. And we'll start with a discussion, right? Or do we need to, we need a roll call or, okay, discussion first?
We can just briefly dug up. So this is, uh, the, what it says, the Niles West tennis court renovation project in the amount of one million twenty-five thousand dollars. It's to do the grading and the resurfacing of the tennis courts and also involves the fencing and stuff that we, when, when we got into the project, there were some issues with, uh, the, the fence moorings and so the fencing has to be replaced and we had to do a little bit more expansion of what the original scope was on the project, but we want to make sure that it's done right. So, I don't know, Athie, do you have anything to add to that? Any questions? By the way, this is very hard act to follow.
Make it more interesting, Tim.
I'm, I'm all out now.
Any kids want to come up here and talk?
You should have brought a tennis player.
Lesson learned, right? So basically, so I don't remember ever doing the tennis courts while I've been here. So how often do you guys, do we do this? Like every ten years, every?
Probably at least that, right?
Longer than that than before that.
Yeah, it was longer than that. The coating usually has a lifespan of about ten to twelve years. And then depending on the quality of the work done in the site prep, really is kind of directly really, it's a how long the actual sub base and asphalt itself will last. We did the Niles North courts, just for context, in summer of twenty nineteen. So, and those courts look great still, so they've been down for four years now. So, um, ten years at least, I would say.
Good to know. So in another ten years. All right.
And just, just for content, there is a quarter-million-dollar contingency in this. So it's possible that it won't cost a full one-point-something million. It may actually be less depending on what is found through our cores and
Right. Although, although we do core and get a sample as far as what we think we're getting into and we start digging, you never know for sure and you have to always, we try to have a decent contingency in any kind of, uh, project that has any kind of digging involved in it because you never know if you're going to hit unsuitable soils or not.
So what we're voting on is, is most likely worst-case scenario.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Also with this is, uh, you're going to start to start seeing a shift from Niles North construction to start seeing more of Niles West remodeling and bringing up to speed. I know everybody's been kind of curious, when are we going to do Niles West and when are we going to, you're going to start seeing that happening up as we wrap up with the last building here at Niles North. And, um, you're going to start seeing this coming up because our pool was in, our tennis courts and you're going to see other things keep on coming up as the diary needs come out.
And I will see them because I live right down the street.
Yes, you will. You'll keep the construction just busy just for you.
Thanks, guys. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. I think we're done with the questions. May I have a roll call?
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez? Member Fling?
Yes.
Member Noah?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes.
All right. Next is the Niles North addition and renovation change orders. So Tim and Ethy will provide some feedback on that. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the change order, orders from the Niles North addition and renovation project in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, oh, it's ninety-seven million nine hundred and forty-four thousand?
No, no.
No?
No, no.
Did I read it wrong?
Ninety-seven thousand?
Because I'm thinking, I'm like, I'm like, you can't be ninety-seven thousand, million.
Ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars.
I'm like, we only get a hundred and thirty million. That's like half of, that's like all of our budget. So ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents with a question mark at the end. I don't know what that means. that means. But you guys will explain that, right?
I don't know where the question mark is, but.
I don't know either. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Question of, may I have a motion?
No, I don't think so. It's like, right there.
I know, but it's.
Oh, is it at the end there? Okay. May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. And we'll have a discussion.
It's pretty much is what it describes. I mean, the backup is that thick, so there's a lot involved in this. So, I don't know, Athie, if you want to talk about any of the highlights, it's pretty much, it's already been described. Access control systems, AV equipment, electrical, and what else? That's about it.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. So.
Okay.
Any questions at all?
Let's go page by page.
Again, hard act to follow, what they have in students.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, any comments? Nope. All right. May I have a roll call?
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Okay. Next one, health, it's health life safety funds. Okay. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the life safety amendment for Niles North High School totaling $5,359,954.30, and the life safety amendment for Niles West High School totaling $971,153.30 as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. You can choose whoever you want. And you guys want to give us a little bit of a background?
Sure. These are, these are all related to projects that have already been approved by the board with the roofing and the boiler repair. What this allows, what the passing of this approval allows us to use life safety funds, those of you that have been on the board for a while, you know that back in, what was it, the dicennial?
2016, 2017.
2016, 2017. The architects came through and did, by law, they have to do an assessment every 10 years and assess all the things that concern life safety, and they grade them into A, B, and C categories. A being the more, relatively speaking, more critical ones. Anyway, the funds that are set aside to, to take care of those, those items that are, that are listed in the dicennial report, in the, in the life safety plan, are put in the Fund 90, Fire Prevention and Safety Fund. That's a very restricted fund, and we can only use those funds for those types of purposes. What this does is it frees up those funds. Right now, we have, in our budget, or in our fund balance, in that fund, we have approximately $6,650,206. These two projects with the Niles North, roughly 5 million, and the West, roughly 1 million, those total 6,331,11033. What this does is it allocates those funds to, or the funds for these projects to be taken out of that fund rather than, rather than out of our capital projects fund, which is Fund 80. Capital Projects Fund is very much, it's not, it's still a restricted fund, but it's fun, but it's, you can use it a lot, you know, a lot, for a lot of different uses. So what we want to do, when we have the opportunity to use the life safety funds, we want to use them, because if for some reason we kind of get low on projects, we still have the funds sitting there, and we're not gonna be able to get them out of there. So, and it's what it's, it's what it's intended to use for, so.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that. Any questions or?
Just a comment, just to give a progress, because Athie in Studio GC was really nice to add that into our thing. And just so that the members and anybody watching, so they know where our progress is. Niles Central High School is 70% completed. 81% of that is HLSA A, which are the most priority. 69% is B, and C, which is our lowest priority, is 9%. Then you go to Niles North High School. We're at 86% completion. 99% of our HLSA is completed, 100% of our HLSAB, and 76% of our HLSAC is completed. Niles West High School has 77% completion, with 95% of the HLSA completed, 83% of the HLSB, and 67% of the HLSC. So, just the health life safety update for everybody, just if they wanted to know.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Sure.
And really, once we get 100% in all those, there's not gonna be a whole lot more to do.
So then our next 10-year life safety will be pretty.
Here it comes.
Okay.
All right, awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. May I have a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right. Next, Niles West Culinary Lab. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of a double stack convention oven in the amount of 27,000, this is just a small number, 27,225 dollars. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Not for an oven.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. I don't ever remember doing this since I've been on the board. So is this like, just a once in a lifetime?
We've never, we've never had one.
We've never done that. Interesting. Okay.
Well, I think everybody knows the culinary lab is gangbusters. I mean, the kids, a lot of interest in that program. And this just helps expand the program so that we can, you know, better utilize it, better, it can be better utilized for more students in the building. So it's a great program, and we need to keep supporting it, so.
Yeah, it's awesome. We actually made us dinner one time. We had our board meeting in their kitchen, which was really fabulous. It was beautiful. So thank you for that. Any questions or comments?
Something kind of related to this, as our, as Mr. Newbar was talking about, how our culinary group is growing, and the fondness of that is growing. Maybe also to look at about space and space utilization. We do have Bridges Building in Lincolnwood that we could technically use, and, but we have certain quiet hours that we're supposed to keep. But I would suggest that we, as a board, have that conversation with the trustees of Lincolnwood again, and just to figure out if we have a need for whatever culinary needs progress, that we can always kind of use that as an off-site facility, just in case, instead of having to go other places.
It's a very large facility. I mean, I'm sure that we could use it and utilize, utilize it for other things when, when we can, when they're not using it. But also, the culinary is great. Like, every one of the kids in my family who've attended have taken it, and thank you, because they can make their own meals, which is amazing. So. Any other comments? Questions? Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Next, the renewal of the Quest Food Service. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2023-2024 contract extension with Quest Management Services as presented? So, Tim, you'll give us the details?
Sure. So Quest is with, has been with the district since the 2021 school year. I've, my phone hasn't, has not rung over food service issues the whole time I've been here, which is great, because I've been other places where it has been an issue. But I think Quest is doing a fine job. You know, they can always do better. But I think they're, they listen to the students. They do have meetings with students. They meet with the assistant principals in the, in the buildings regularly to discuss food offerings. They take surveys. I meet with them on a formal basis, at least quarterly. I think they're doing a fine job. Quest itself is really taking on a lot of school districts in this area. Some of the longstanding major, major food service companies are kind of going by the wayside, and Quest has taken over. I think they've done a great job. This contract renewal is for approximately a 6.7% increase over last year. And I think that's fair, given the, the cost of food and commodities over the last couple of years. So that's what this is for, basically a 6.7% increase over last year. So, any questions at all?
And so it's only a one, one-year extension, correct?
One year, yeah.
I had to, I do have some questions in regards to our free and reduced lunches, the amount of variety that's being offered, and like every other good food service provider, you know, they always start off gangbusters, year one. They over, give you over portion sizes. They give you massive variety. And as it kind of dwindles down, you start to see those things happening. And during just the conversations in the past several months that I've had with a lot of families and things like that, their biggest concern is the, having even just choices by the time they hit their later, like lunch period six, seven, something like that, and when they're getting there. So that's been a concern about having that. And also, for our halal and our kosher options, is they're grateful that it's an option, because most food service providers don't do that. But just to also talk about either variety or quality of that as well with them, so that way we can just, you know, normally, we've gone out every couple of years to just, you know, bring in the new vendors and see what they do and offer. But I think you're correct in the fact that Quest is probably one of the larger ones out there that can handle this type of thing. But maybe just to give them a nice little nudge and a poke, and just say, hi, and can you make sure our free and reduced lunch are, and all these other options, if we have more options. And I know that's getting harder, especially with the food costs going up. But just to kind of have that discussion a little bit.
Well, and, and as you know, we're not, we're not on the free and reduced lunch program. Basically, we, a lot of high school districts do this, where they go off the free and reduced, the National School Lunch Program.
Yes, we're not on the National School Lunch Program, yeah.
And the district itself makes, itself makes up for the difference for what's being compensated for, for the free and reduced meals. But in that way, we're able to provide meals that the kids will eat. I've been in other districts, in NSLP, and the constraints of the NSLP ebb and flow. They get stricter at times, and then they get a little bit less strict over time. But at the times that they're strict, it's like, you give the, you give the student the food, and it winds up in the garbage can. By the time they get out of the lunch, what good is that? So.
Yeah, that's why we didn't decide to go to the National School Lunch Program several years ago, because of that issue. And so, I mean, I think we're okay with the way it is. It's just if we could beef it up a little bit.
Sure.
In options wise, and those things are specifically the things that I've been hearing. And I don't know about any other board members, if they've been hearing anything else, but that's something that I know has been a concern.
Sure. I'll talk to them.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard any complaints about the food choices, or the size, surprisingly, because the athletes like the larger sizes. And people are very happy with the options for halal and kosher. So, a lot of positive feedback from the community.
Good to hear.
So, thank you for that. All right. Any other questions or comments? Nope. Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
I need a motion in a second.
Oh.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Thank you. All right. Next one is new kitchen steamer. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of a new steamer from Trimark in the amount of $37,145.60. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, so, every year when we go through the budget process, we know things are gonna break, and things get old. And this team, this steamer that's being replaced here, I don't know what the exact age of it, but it's quite old, and it's, it's basically not working anymore. And a steamer is an important part of the kitchen operation. Anyway, during the budget process, we ask Quest, and we ask the, our maintenance leaders, you know, what's needed in the kitchens. And this wasn't identified during the budget time, but I do, in our budget process, we do allow a $50,000, kind of a placeholder for anything that comes up during the year. And this is, this falls under that for that school. So that's what this is about. And it is sorely needed. So I recommend the board approve this.
All right. Is there like a, a life cycle on this one, and the maintenance or any cost?
They last a long time. I mean, yeah. This one, this one could have been 20 years old. I don't know.
Oh, great. Okay. Good. All right. Any other questions or comments? Nope. All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right. Next, the Niles North Field Turf. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the $450,000 expenditure to the Field Turf USA, Inc. for, for field turf components at Niles North High School. May I have a motion, please?
So. Second.
Thank you.
Well, this one is not a good one, as far as I'm concerned. Back in February, we went to the board and asked for a $1,216,936.67 expenditure through a co-op, through Source Well co-op, for the, the field turf itself, for the, for Niles North. Again, that was out of a co-op. Going back and look at the calculations, and if you look on the second, the second page of the information that was provided, you can see that if you add up the numbers on the back of that page, they don't add up to the $1.2 million. They actually add up to 1,660,0936.67. Where that, where that first number came from, I can't tell you. It was a, some kind of a miscalculation as far as looking at the numbers, because it's exactly a $450,000 difference. So I'm coming back to the board to see if the board would approve the additional $450,000 for the expenditure for the field turf through Field Turf USA. And again, it's through the Source Well co-op.
So it sounds like it was just probably a clerical error or a miscalculation?
Yeah, or typo or something, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. I appreciate it.
I just want to commend our chief financial officer for bringing us to the facilities. You know, an error could have been swept under the rug and just put in somewhere. And it's, it shows the transparency that when something is found, it's presented, and the board has the opportunity to review it carefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the transparency. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is the Lakeview Bus Lines, Inc. Agreement Renewal. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the attached 2023-2024 Services Contract Extension with Lakeview Bus Lines, Inc. as presented? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Farzane. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Tim?
Well, again, this is the, the contract extension for Lakeview Bus. They do the transportation services for our special education students. They've been doing a fine job. Last year, you know, with the, the way the prices have been going up, last year, they, they received a nine and a half percent increase. This year, it's scaled down a little bit. I checked the, the CPI, the year-to-year rolling CPI. It's, it's, it's coming down, which is a good thing. It's down around 5% now, but maybe a little bit even under that yet. But anyway, this, this agreement renewal request is for a 6% increase over last year. Again, they'd been, they've done a fine job. They're very responsive. And if Bridgette was here, I think she'd attest to that, so.
Awesome. Any questions or comments? Nope. All right. May I have a motion, please?
You already got.
Oh, I already have a motion. May I have a roll call, please?
Uh, member Dr. Ko?
No.
Member Dr. Ko?
Oh, yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Doick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Our next one, Security Service Contract Extension. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the amendment to the Security Services Agreement between Niles Township High School District 219 and Permar Security Services as presented? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And I guess.
Sure. Just kind of a preface, we're almost through these, these contract renewals. We do have two more coming up, probably at the next board meeting for our first student, which is our regular transportation services, and ABM, who does our custodial services. So we're getting through the meat of them tonight. So, anyway, this is for a 5.5% increase over last year for security services with Permar. This does include, a lot of their officers are making in the $18 an hour range now. This would, included in this, would boost them up to $19 an hour. You know, it's getting tougher and tougher to get people up there. In fact, between our different vendors, even, we're kind of, I'm trying to, the Permar increase and my discussions I am having with ABM, who is our custodial contractor, I'm trying to get those wage structures to be very similar, so they're not robbing from each other. So, between transportation and, you know, all those ancillary services that we outsource right now, try to get those services kind of in par with each other, so that they're all kind of in the same boat. Now, we can't, you know, what happens with the other school districts and other competing attractions that some employees might go to, we can't do anything about that. But we're trying to keep things in order as much trying to keep things in order as much as we can internally or with our external vendors. So anyway, um, this, uh, this includes a, a, a compensation for at least $19 an hour for, for our, uh, for our security officers. It does include some help at the transportation level, um, in administering the transportation services particularly as it pertains to the, um, vans for, uh, the Bridges Program. Any questions at all?
Anybody?
Uh, only question, just to clarify, what the timeframe? So the contract originally was 2016 to 2019. And then they get, they get seven more addition, they can, we can do seven more one-year extensions.
Correct.
So it goes to 2016.
If we, if we decide to do that, right, we, we, we can say yes or no on an annual basis. And I know we're probably going to be taking a look at our security services soon. So this gives us the latitude to both have the security services now and, and, you know, decide what we want to do going forward.
Sounds good.
I have a question. So, um, I know we've been renewing and renewing. When can we look at different security options?
That's, we're going to be looking into that this year.
I think that I think it would be part of negotiations. It would probably be discussed in closed session. In all honesty, that's something we've talked about as we go into this coming year.
And then can I also suggest that it's been over five years since we've had our safety, security, third party come in and do that assessment? I would like to really update that again, um, just because my kids go to a sender school and they're using seven, 10-year-old data to do, you know, drills. And I'm really not happy about that. So I would like, uh, for especially our district to make sure that we are staying on top of what best practices.
Oh, I, yes, we've changed best practices.
Yeah, I, I know. I know we have. But I just want to make sure that, you know, it, it's been what, 2016, 17 is when we first bought that group on. We did all that, uh, updates. And then I just wanted to do another, yeah, if we could get to have that conversation. So at least with our newer board members that are coming on, they can understand what the, what it looks like from the inside looking out, kind of.
It's, it's certainly an area that's been a focus for me this year to study. I have a lot of thoughts on it. And, um, I think it's something we'll see a lot of discussion on in the coming year.
Yeah.
And also don't forget, we had two years that were, that were erased from history. So just got to say that. It's like, I don't feel like nothing, there was nothing that happened for two years. So, all right.
So does this mean that we're locked in for the whole year or as?
If you look at the timing of when we'd be going through negotiations or anything, it would basically, we won't, we might come to a conclusion about what we're going to do, but we would need this for the year until we made just a, if you look at the timeline of contracts expiring and everything else, we basically need a year of leeway here for this.
And I do believe that there's, um, a notice, right? A time of notice if you want to end your contract. Isn't there like a limitation?
I don't know what the terms are in this one, but typically it's a 90-day notice provision.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or, okay, we're good. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Uh, member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzany?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez? Member Abraham?
Yes. Next, may I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the IHSA membership renewal for the 2023-2024 school year as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Tom and, Tim, okay. Hi, guys.
Hey, um, this is just the annual renewal for the high schools to be able to participate in the IHSA State Series postseason competition, et cetera. So, yeah, that's it. Pretty straightforward.
We'll say yes, I promise. I heard that. I heard that.
We want to, we want to change league.
If you don't, we're going to have a lot of upset student athletes.
Can we change it to a different conference?
All right. Any questions or comments? Nope? Okay. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Lopez? Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzany?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right. Um, next. All right. Uh, may I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the administration's recommendation for the ombudsman contract renewal? I hope I said that right. For the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $141,000 and 100, sorry, $141,900. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Bridgette couldn't make it tonight, so I'll fill in.
Okay.
I have a hard time saying ombudsman too. But, um.
Not at this hour.
The, uh, ombud, ombudsman program is for, is to help, um, students that may be in jeopardy of, uh, of graduating. And it's a, it's a out-of-district program that's been used by a lot of districts and I think used here from a number of years. So as Tom would say, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Any questions or comments? I feel like you, you put all of your preparation time into this. All right. It sounds like there's no comments. No, okay, great. Can I get a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Farzany?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez? Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that ends that part of the meeting. No more agendas to vote on. Any new business that anybody wants to present?
I have a new business.
Okay.
Oh, so just really quickly, um, speaking with, uh, some of our members and talking with, uh, community members that don't have our students attending our school districts. I believe there is a policy that they were talking about in ISBE, Illinois State Board of Education, about, uh, providing transportation to private school, uh, students and things like that in our community. And since they are taxpayers and they are paying for all that stuff as well, uh, I wanted to start having a discussion about bringing those things in, whether they're private day school or whatever school that they are. And not along just those lines, but also to help, um, with our athletes and other clubs that, you know, if they're having homeschooled students, that they can't get all the necessary, like for instance, STEM requirements that they can maybe come back and forth and traveling to that with school. So I know that's been something that's been a topic that's been discussed for a while. I don't think many people in the community actually know what to do or how to approach that. So I wanted to bring that up and just make sure that we as District 219 are making sure we take care of all of our people that live in our community and whatever necessary things that they need, whether it's to join a club or to join a sport like a activity, anything like that, to help their furthering their progress. Cause a lot of kids are getting homeschooled these days. And a lot of kids are in private schools and that's why our numbers don't keep going up. But it would help to get our kids into those programs as well and be a part of a team for extracurricular social emotional wellbeing and to kind of do that, especially after COVID time. So I wanted to bring that up as new business.
I think we probably have to have a discussion with our council just to make sure the legalities behind that.
Yeah, we can bring it up in a couple of things. We'll put it on an agenda once we get more information.
Yeah. Anyone else have new business? Joe?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll read mine because it's getting late. Um, I'd like to thank the teachers and parents that have brought a critical issue to the forefront of our March D219 board meeting. The issue is student, um, chronic absenteeism. I believe that all of us will acknowledge that there is a strong correlation between good attendance and better understanding and proficiency in the subject. The more our students attend classes, the better their academic performance. The current picture of student absenteeism at D219 is not a positive one. Uh, I'm going to include data that, uh, we'll be able to provide in the minutes, uh, demographic breakdown of the attendance over the last five years by race, gender, low-income, English learners and grade level of students, um, from our most recent 2022 Illinois Report Card of D219. So we have a negative trend for the last five years. So anybody who says it's COVID-related, it started before COVID and it's still continuing now after COVID. So my new business is to instruct our superintendent with the will of the board to create a team of his administrators along with whatever additional personnel and resources he believes he, he needs to, one, investigate and determine the root causes of chronic student absenteeism at D219. Two, present to the board a plan to address the identified underlying causes of absenteeism along with a proposed strategy and actions to promote regular school attendance. And finally, three, implement the board improve, uh, implement the board approved plan with the appropriate metrics and tracking to ensure that future, uh, that student chronic absenteeism in the future is improving. I think, uh, it's a worthwhile metric for us to consider as a board. So.
I wonder if that's somehow connected to all the, uh, mental health, um, that we've been talking about, the need for more mental health support. I wonder if that has something to do with that in the last five years. Just be curious to see if there's a connection.
I mean, unfortunately, some of the numbers are, are pretty striking according to the data. And they're saying, I guess it's for students who have more than 10 absenteeisms in a given year. Uh, in 2022, of all of our students, 26.2% of our students have missed more than 10 school days out of a 20, you know, 39-week school year. So that's, that's significant. And I think that, uh, if we really want to educate our kids, they got to, we got to get them into the classroom, at least find out why they're not in the classroom.
Yeah. Need to find out the underlying causes. Okay. Thank you for that. Any other new business? Okay. Uh, and then we move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. As always, the students stole most of my report, um, when they reported, which I'm sure we don't mind. And, and I do, um, want to say a couple of things. One, as you know, we're deep into hiring season with some important positions open. HY has done a really good job meeting with a variety of stakeholders, creating the leadership profile for, um, Niles West Principalship. They sent that over to me, um, at the end of last week with the entire profile. I've been reviewing candidates. They've been reviewing candidates. I've been doing paper screenings. They are meeting with candidates this week as we speak, although it's probably too late for that now. And we'll be bringing in, um, a list of candidates that they vet over the coming weeks. And you know, our goal would be at the main, May meeting to have, um, an announcement for that. It may be an aggressive timeline depending, but, um, it's definitely possible. Um, and I, I do believe that, um, I, I want to thank the students, teachers, stakeholders, community members that did come out and give feedback about, um, what Niles West, um, needs in its next leader. So I'm excited about that. Um, and excited seeing some of the candidates. Also, tonight we did have, um, students here talking about, um, the Menace Summit. I unfortunately, they, they thanked me. I was saddened that I couldn't go to that in my, in the last board meeting, which was the second out of 300-plus board meetings in my life that I've missed. Um, but I was in some weird fever dreams with COVID, man. Nobody would have wanted me around. I promise you that. But, um, just the reports on that were fantastic. And I was able to go to the Black Teen Summit last week. We welcomed, um, Dr. Rosina Haskins, who will be our next deputy superintendent. Was the keynote at the beginning of it. It was a great day, a great presentation. And I'm just lucky to be here. And I think you heard, um, you know, it was about six months ago when, um, members of the Black Student Union came. And in my own fit of peak slash rage, I said in three years, if things don't get better, you won't have to fire me. I'll step down. I don't think I'm going to have to step down. I can tell you in these six months, there's positive momentum. Things are getting better. I am really optimistic about our future. Kids keep coming forward, talking about what they see, what they need. Our staff is on board. There's a lot of positive momentum right now. And I, while I will enjoy the break in five weeks or six weeks, once the school year ends, I am really excited about getting to that, this summer and doing some active planning, active work, making some shifts and really, um, pushing. Cause it is time to push now. But we've, we've got some positive momentum in this district right now. And I, I'm, I just feel so fortunate to be here. So I, I wanted to say that. So thank you all of you for your support with that.
Thank you. Um, next, we're going to move on to board committee reports. Does anybody have any? I know we haven't, they haven't been meeting. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we just voted on everything. So I don't think we missed anything from now on. Yeah. No, that's all right. Um, okay. Next, um, the information for FOIA reports and monthly financial reports have been provided. And that pretty much ends the meeting. So may I have a motion to adjourn closed? Not closed, sorry. To adjourn. Yeah. I need a motion to close this session at 10:12 PM?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Uh, member Dr. Lopez? Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzany?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Thank you.